Town of Alphach, a joint protections process property subcommittee meeting and town council meeting, Wednesday, February twenty second, two thousand twenty-three, six P M. Veterans Room.
It's recorded.
We are being recorded. Call meeting order, roll call. Julian.
Yeah.
Shinya.
You.
What kind of guy do you want to sit here?
Yeah.
Martin D.
Present.
Rebus. Waiting. We have a quorum. Moving on to the review and discuss. We're gonna postpone three, four.
Five.
Five. We'll go over to agenda item number six, because we have, uh, two fires going on, two incidences on fireside. The chief requested to bump them. All right, number six is review, discuss a donation of five hundred dollars to the police department from the Italian Club and entertain a motion for the town council to accept this donation to be used at the discrimination discretion of the police chief.
So.
We have a motion by Shinya in a second, chief.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, what do you think? Every year the Italian Club donates money to the police department, and I just request that we can use this, uh, like, last year we used it for birthday parties for kids, we use it to buy ice cream for kids, just in various capacities. Every year they give a donation to the police and fire, we appreciate it.
Any discussion, questions? If not, all is a favor. Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to agenda item number seven, review and discuss the police department transfer request for twelve thousand dollars from account number zero zero one one three two dash five seven eight one zero zero, town council reserves fund two, number eight nine eight nine zero 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 dash two five eight two zero zero. Detail account to cover a deficit due to the uncollectibles and entertain a motion to the town council to approve. Clear motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion second.
Chief. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, this is a, uh, first time, the first one for me, I should say, so, Ms. Heimlich, prior to her departure, did a full audit of the detail account, which is great. Uh, the deficit is actually, I'll kind of explain that, twelve thousand, it's fifty-five hundred dollars in uncollectibles. So, a little bit of history, so, over the last five years, we've collected, or we've billed for about four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars every year, for the last five years, give or take, you know, a few pennies here and there. But we bill out four hundred seventy-five thousand every year, it's not gonna go down, it's actually gonna go up now. Out of that four hundred seventy-five thousand that we billed, right now, and this is more than just one year, we have five thousand five hundred that we can't collect. We've chased people, companies have gone out of business, companies have worked with mass DOT projects back in like fourteen, fifteen, before I was even the chief, and Karen found some of these uncollectibles that we cannot go back and get, there's a private contractor working through DOT, they can't open their books, cause it's, you know, five fiscal years ago. So what I'm requesting is, the twelve thousand dollar amount, like, Karen's obviously not here anymore to speak to it, she suggested I go a little bit higher than the fifty-five hundred, just so we have a buffer in there in case there's any more uncollectibles. But right now, out of that four hundred seventy-five grand, there's five fifty-five hundred that we did not, couldn't collect. In addition to that, um, and I was told I couldn't do this, but my first recommendation was to take some of the admin fees that we've collected back in twenty, fiscally year twenty, we collected sixty thousand dollars in admin fees, that's that ten percent fee for all private companies. Back in fiscally year twenty-one, the town collected fifty thousand dollars in fees, and back in twenty-two, we collected forty thousand dollars in fees. So there's a lot of money in fees that the town collects from my men and women working in the streets, doing private details, so I originally asked Karen, can we just take it out of that admin fee account? And I was told that it's, that you can't, it's against accounting, policy, procedures, whatever. So there's a lot of money that the town brings in because of details, this is five thousand five hundred dollars that we couldn't collect, it goes back many years, and now my current executive assistant, who's responsible for billing, she's a pit bull, she is on these companies, constantly, I don't see us being in a deficit again, but right now, we have a little over five thousand dollars in uncollectibles.
So you're gonna adjust your accounts to next year, so you don't need to come back to that problem?
Well, what I would do, respectfully, what I'm asking for, and then again, the recommendation of the finance, former finance director, ask for more than you need, so you have a buffer in case there's another issue, say, uh, you know, John Smith Construction next year does a project in town, they pay us upfront, the check balances with, you know, three hundred dollars or whatever they owe us, if we know it's gonna be uncollectible right away, I don't have to come back to the council and ask for three hundred fifty dollars to pay the bill. We have a buffer in the detail account. We've always had a buffer in detail account, I guess there's never been a full audit on it until recently, and I know five thousand five hundred sounds like a lot of money, but we're billing an almost half a million dollars a year. So over the last, you know, five, ten years, that five thousand five hundred is, it's just, we're never gonna get it back.
Have we been getting better at collecting?
Absolutely, yes, as far as I know, in the last, well, I've been the chief for six years, cause there are chiefs, believe it or not, that don't even know that they're owed money, we know every penny that we're owed, we know who owes it, because it's on me, at the end of the day, now it is anyway. So, that's why I'm happy this audit was done before she left, cause I trust her numbers, and if she tells me that's what we owe, that's what we owe. So this just essentially moves money from one account to another to cover the uncollectibles.
What happens if you collect the money and then you have this surplus?
It would stay with the town, it would go, it would go from the detail account to the general fund.
So, so at the end of this year, it reverts back to the general?
Yep, yeah, and through you, Mr. Chair, I, um, right now, if this is approved, or recommended, then approved by the full council, we're even, our account is that we're owed nothing, and we can march on from there, and going forward, and, and again, some of these, I don't know how they slipped past, and again, I don't know how many years ago it was, but you can't work if, um, you know, council Rebus has a construction company and saying, you know better than anybody, so you, you have to come and, you gotta pay us before you even do the work.
That's why I'm surprised.
But occasionally, Nat Grid, they don't pay us, because I know Nat Grid isn't going out of business anytime soon. Uh, NewCo, companies historically, they've built hundreds of thousands of dollars with us a year, and have never ever defaulted on any payment. This is more of a contractor for mass DOT, and I'll go back to even when I was a kid, the Palmer Haven Project on Main Street twenty-two years ago, twenty-three years ago, um, they use a lot of subcontractors that come in, we bill them through DOT as a sub, but we, they just, we never got paid. And that's going back many, many years, just off the top of my head. So big companies like Palmer Haven, normally, we wouldn't worry about them not paying their bill, but if they're subcontracting somebody, some other company to cut concrete or what, or whatever it may be, that's supposed to pay us, and they just didn't pay us. And again, we're collecting a lot of money, a lot of money comes through our place, um, it's all paper, I mean, it goes right to the town, we never really touch it physically, but the billing in and of itself is a job.
Any other questions?
I do.
Presidente?
So the companies that didn't pay you, do you have a list of them, and I, I'm going to presume they're not gonna be allowed to do it in our business?
We do, absolutely, we have a list, and I think it's only three of them, or four, four at most, th- they're flagged. If they ever come back in, and I know, just over these, White Mountain Cable in New Hampshire, they're not working this community until they square up on us. And if that happens, if we can collect this, I just want this to be zeroed out, I don't have to think about it anymore, but if for some reason we collect this, it goes back to the town, it doesn't come to my budget or my department, it comes back to the town.
So then the only other thing is, I, I realize we have to pay this, I just always hesitate to overpay something, put too much in there, I mean, that happens with so many different line items, and then we always end up, they always end up, I'm not saying we're going to do this, but a lot of times, oh, well, we got some extra money here, let's use it on a drone.
Well, well, I, well, I could not do that through you, Mr. Chair, because this is a specific police detail account, I, I couldn't touch this, if this was a hundred thousand dollars more than I needed, we can't touch it for anything else, other than paying police officers or constables to do details, that's it.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, all is a favor. Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to number eight, review and discuss police department transfer request for two hundred and fifty dollars from account number zero zero one two one zero dash five one eight one zero zero, witness to zero zero one two one zero dash five seven one zero zero zero, mileage, in-state travel, to cover costs for mileage reimbursement, tolls and other fees for officer mandated training, entertain a motion to the council to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rebus, second by Julian. Chief?
And through you, Mr. Chair, and you'll hear me talk about it a lot later, uh, in the last agenda item, but the police world's changing, training is changing, requirements are changing, I can't guesstimate, we get five hundred dollars in this account every year for mileage, in-state travel, and, um, I, I can't, I'm guessing on what the number's gonna be, how often does the police officer have to get on the pike, go to the Western Mass Police Academy? How often do they have to get on the pike, go to the Norwood Police Academy? Sometimes the training's only offered further away, out towards Lee Mass, it's just, again, it's paying people mileage, and we have to pay them, and paying for tolls, right now, I've got a hundred fifty-four, fifty-eight in that account, and this, uh, two hundred and fifty-dollar request will get us through June thirtieth, I expect a lot of any problems.
Any discussion? No discussion, all is a favor. Opposed, unanimous. Moving on to nine, review and discuss police department transfer request for a hundred dollars from account number zero zero one two one zero dash five one eight one zero zero, witness to account number zero zero one two one zero dash five seven one one zero zero, conferences and meetings to cover fees, to attend association conferences and meetings, and entertain a motion to the council to approve. Clear motion?
Second.
Chief?
Through you, Mr. Chair, again, this is an original I M. of two thousand dollars right now, we have three dollars and forty-six cents left in it, these are just additional expenses, I looked at, the central mass chiefs meetings from now through June thirtieth, the mass chiefs meetings from now through June thirtieth, and this hundred dollar transfer will cover those costs on this fiscally year.
Discussion? No discussion, all is a favor. Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to agenda item number ten, review and discuss the mutual agreement for engaged investigative assistance in criminal investigations, entertain a motion to vote to recommend the town council to authorize the town manager and chief of police to sign the agreement. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion by Shinya, second and by Julian. Chief?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I, I know that this can be a little bit confusing, so I'll explain it quickly, when I was a detective, I was a member of this, this is our task force. When I was a detective sergeant, I ran the unit, I was the supervisor of it, now that I'm the chief, last month, I got put in as the president of the task force, cause the previous president retired. Um, this is eight towns that are involved in this operation, it's immediate help when we need it, when we need it for any crime, any narcotics investigation. The last mutual aid agreement, that's essentially what this is, is a mutual aid agreement between all the towns, Webster, Oxford, Shelton, Sturridge, you can see him on the back, Warren just jumped on board, East Brookfield, Dudley, so this is essentially, we make a call, they come down, they respond, Southbridge is actually the greatest beneficiary of this, believe it or not, we're the busiest, Webster's second, some of these other communities that are on this, they send their detectives here to work cases in our community, to help our task force, because they don't have as much activity in their communities as we do. So it's a great win for the town, it costs us nothing to be a member of this task force, our detectives, most of the time, are doing these cases when they're already working, so they're not getting paid overtime, and when other communities come here, their departments cover their overtime, so it's a win-win, it's similar to like a SWAT team, but it's for narcotics and major crime investigations, we can get twenty people down here with one phone call, and it doesn't cost us anything.
Discussion?
Um, just a quick question, besides adding Warren, has any other element of the agreement changed?
Nothing, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, nothing changed, and we added East Brookfield also. East Brookfield and Warren jumped on board, but other than that, this, this agreement is exactly the same that was signed by the town council back in oh eight, I just wanted to upgrade it, cause it seems ridiculous to be working on the same mutual aid agreement from fifteen years ago.
Isn't there a sunset clause on this?
No, no.
So once you sign it, it's good till you redo it again, but?
Any further, Julian?
Through you, um, chief, when I was working for you, um, I worked with these guys a couple times, uh, Sergeant Dinghy took me in, and, uh, I went to a few, it's, it's great to have the other communities, you know, working with us, doing this stuff.
Yep. And if I couldn't, through you, Mr. Chair, I mean, I know we're working under the oh eight agreement, we had people here this morning at six A M., executing search warrant on a house in our community, from the task force, so I mean, they're working, it's constant, it's, they're constantly here.
Any further discussion? If not, all is a favor. Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to agenda item number eleven, review and discuss the reorganization of command staff of the police department, and vote to make a recommendation to town council for approval. Clear motion?
Second.
Chief?
So through you, Mr. Chair, so, in the, um, packet that you have, there's a current log chart under addendum A, there's a proposed log chart under addendum B, and there's an uh, addendum C, an ideal log chart, which is not what I'm asking for, but I wanted you to at least see it, um, I'll explain that a little bit more, but all the yellow that you see are actually, actually people, that require supervision, that's why it's color-coded. So just to kind of get into it a little bit, I know you have that memo, so I certainly don't wanna keep everybody here all night going over that word for word, but for about thirty years now, there's been three members of the administration, a chief, a deputy, a lieutenant, or some variation of that, a chief, two lieutenants, no deputy, it, just, it's always fluctuated, but command staff has never changed. A lot of it, again, is in that memo, but we now have so many more requirements and things that we need to do, um, we have to report to post, which is the police officer's standards for training, weekly almost, we have daily responsibilities to achieve accreditation, which, that's gonna take a few years to do, but the requirements, once it's done, go on daily, it's never gonna end. And we have to track all training from the day a recruit starts with us till the day they retire, in fact, I'm in the weeds right now with trying to hire some new recruits, and I'm working with post, and it is a whole nother animal, it's, it's a job, hiring people in and of itself, with the reporting that it takes, the new backgrounds that you have to do, um, the confirmations through post, the signatures, i- it's getting a little bit crazy, um, any use of force in our community now has to go to post, every single internal affairs investigation has to be investigated differently and then go to post, um, and again, all backgrounds, that we have to change, we do our backgrounds to comply with post, this isn't to mention, you know, the freedom of information requests that we get every day, the sex offender trafficking, uh, tracking, the court responsibilities, firearms tracking, a- and again, just to be clear, y- you know, I'm the guy, you're looking at them, I pushed for our department to go in this direction, um, because I want us to be more professional with the changing times, post, believe it or not, is gonna be a good thing for the town, and a good thing for the police department, um, we could have collectively sat back, and especially myself and the deputy chief, and done nothing, and waited like some departments are doing, until the state mandates you to do things, or requires you to do things, or requires you to get body cameras, but we wanna have a say in some of these changes, which is why I pushed so hard for this, I got our union to agree with it during our last, uh, negotiations, I shouldn't even say I, but in general, the management at the police department and our former town manager, you know, the union kind of saw the light of day, the writing's on the wall, we're gonna be forced to do things, whether you like it or not, so we should have some say and some input, and I think we're in a good position with that. Of course, all of this, what I just mentioned, um, comes with more responsibilities, and we've done a good job at keeping things, you know, keeping costs down, and to continue to maintain all the services that we provide. A lot of P Ds, as you can see in this memo, um, they're trending towards breaking out a lot of these responsibilities I just went over, and shrinking the span of control, uh, just because of the seriousness of all these mandates, there, the changes in our case law, the potential for lawsuits if errors are made, and you know what, overall, the complexities of some of these assignments are just unbelievable right now, that's not what it used to be, even with me, I remember when I was a lieutenant way back in oh nine, hiring somebody after a question of the council, was a simple background, you, you call somebody, or you fax them, and they're in the academy, that, those days are gone forever, it took me like five hours a day to figure out all the new post requ- all the requirements, it, it's, it's getting crazy. Um, Framingham P D reorganized, where they have specialties now, bigger than us, I work close to the home, Auburn, like mentioned in that memo, they just completely reorganized, uh, to do a different type of chain of command, where you're reporting to less people, keeping that span of control tight, and again, when we get into that flow chart, I'll explain all that. Uh, in the past, what we've done, someone might ask, how have we been doing this since two thousand twenty in December, when it all went into effect, we're taking people that aren't specialized in these tasks and these assignments, and we're making them work out of grade, we're taking a, a patrolman and having them do some sergeant work, or we're taking a sergeant and making them do lieutenant work, we're not making them, we're asking them, and they're doing it, um, and it's just not fair to them anymore, it's, it's, the job description's too complex for what we need our cops to do in twenty twenty-three, and it's not fair to keep these, that make, expect men and women being paid a lesser rank, work outside and above their rank. Uh, promotion, promotions are great for a department, I don't think I'm stating the obvious, you promote from within, is my opinion, unless there's a reason not to, in this particular case, I don't think there's any reason not to, employees, they paid their dues, they've proven they can do the job here, and they move up, it gives some employees a reason to say, stay, and I know some still are gonna leave, but trust me when I tell you, there's many reasons why people leave, there's many layers that we can't get into in, you know, a subcommittee or a, or the public meeting, but believe it or not, it's not always a bad thing, I spoke to some of the councils about some of our, some of the recent issues, it's not always a bad thing when people leave, sometimes it's a good for them to get a fresh start, and sometimes it's good for the town and the department to get a fresh start and get new people in new roles. We currently have thirty-five police officers, we're budgeted for thirty-nine, everybody here was involved, we know we're authorized to hire forty, but I am currently only budgeted for thirty-nine. So right now, we have four vacancies, we're working on filling those vacancies, if this is recommended tonight, what I, and then approved by town council on Monday, I'd like to do some acting promotions as soon as possible, so we can start implementing some of these plans that we have, and what I have, and stay ahead of all these requirements. Um, as far as the testing and the phases and promotionals, I'll be coming back to this committee, um, to test out for an assessment center through civil service for the rank of lieutenant, if it's approved, we'll be putting on two lieutenants, the good thing is, when people move up to lieutenant, we have to back fill those sergeants' vacancies, I have an active list still, cause we promoted, um, Sergeant Jankos last year in June, so there's a current list that's still active for another year for sergeant, so it wouldn't cost us anything to make additional promotions. So I would have to find the money, and I'm gonna get into money in a minute, to do the assessment center, uh, which I'm not asking for more money, I would just do transfers to cover costs of assessment centers, it'd be done through civil service, it'd be internal, Karen's would be internal, and then we would promote off an existing, um, sergeant's list. As far as the responsibilities, if you're looking at B, which is the proposed chart, and you look at the yellow, essentially what we have right now, um, it's just too many tasks and too many responsibilities, you're trying to manage so many people, and, and too many, uh, complex issues that we're dealing with, you essentially have a lieutenant handling accreditation, and that's year-round, you'd have the use of force, um, all the post stuff, internal affairs backgrounds, that lieutenant would also still be overseeing the detective unit, but you'd have a sergeant running the unit. The other, the second lieutenant would be the training person, which is, again, all these requirements are complete change, it's dealing with grants, some of the grant money we have not been able to apply for, because we just don't have the time or the resources to continue to apply for grants, it's a lot of work reporting on grants, everybody says get grants, and I agree, but after you apply for the grant, and Jasmine would know, and your business, it doesn't end, you still have to report the metrics of the grant, the, you know, what the, did you, did you meet what you were supposed to meet, did you fall within lines, did you request reimbursement, did you overspend, underspend, that in and of itself, some departments have people that do nothing but grants, um, the body camera monitoring, the program, by the way, that's coming out in May, um, they'll be here in May, training us, and that's because of an issue with the server, they're saying that it's, um, everything else is saying about COVID, supply chain issues, so Motorola right now is way behind in ours, I think it's May, I have an exact date when they're coming here to train us, so those are coming, we're gonna have to have someone monitor those, download data, send that data to post, for every time we use a body camera for an incident, everybody, it gets reviewed fifteen more times down the line by people, you know, that we don't know. Um, code officer, records, L T Cs, these, all these men and women require supervision, so I mean, I'll be happy to explain or elaborate and stay here all night, but it's to the point where we have about a hundred and seven people working for us, give or take, depending on, you know, who, what month it is, we have civilian personnel working for us, we have a lot going on, we have about five thousand hours of supervision every pay period, that's every two weeks, and it's just a lot for two people to deal with, the deputy chief and myself right now, and I just wanna make sure that we're doing everything we can possibly do, getting all the monies that we can possibly get for the town with grants, and we're in compliance with the post bill, or the police reform bill under post, and just supervision, supervision is everything, you need a boss on every shift, and if you don't have supervision, bad things could happen unfortunately sometime. We had an incident many years ago when I was a lieutenant, it was a black eye for the police department, and it was the last real black eye, knock on wood, that I can remember, and it's because that office was being run by a patrolman working out of grade, not just because of that, but there was no sergeant in the unit at the time, in the detective unit, and it took a long time for us to get that stain off of us, and I think part of that is because they didn't have the, um, I don't wanna say fear, but you're a little less apt to do things wrong when you have a boss working with you hand in hand every day, and that's what it comes down to, we just supervise way too many people now, and I think it's time for our department to move forward. The money, I'm not asking for money, I'm just asking for approval of my, what the current budget is now, and even going forward into F Y twenty-four, I will not be coming here and asking for money, because of the situation explained in the memo, thirty-five people we pay, thirty-nine we're budgeted for, every pay period that goes by, we're down four cops, so we have money left over, where we'll have enough salary to cover the cost of transitioning two sergeants to lieutenant, and that cost is about twelve to thirteen thousand per person, so if a, one sergeant's about thirteen percent pay raise between grades, so going off the top of my head, going from a sergeant to a lieutenant is about twelve to thirteen thousand dollars, and going from a patrolman to a sergeant, depending on degree status and things like that, is about eleven or twelve thousand dollars, all of which can be done under our current operating budget or salary account, just because of the issues that we've had with keeping people, or hiring people, or how long it takes to hire people, you guys, you guys, uh, the council approved people in December, two new recruits, and that academy's still not going until the end of April, so all that money that we were supposed to pay these kids, I say kids, they're all younger than me, is going, it's being carried over payroll, 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 until they start in the academy. So that's, you know, I'll be happy to take any question, there'll be a lot of them, um, but I detailed everything in the memo, I just didn't wanna insult anybody and go over it word for word, I kind of skimmed over a lot, as a quick summary, it reads the digest version, but please, you know, feel free to, you know.
Any questions?
Ask whatever.
Go ahead, Julian.
So, this was brought before this committee before, to get another lieutenant, and it was denied. Um, right now, with everything we have going on in town, it's kind of hard to look at this and say, all right, let's, let's promote, 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 with everything that's going on, with trash, with the D W debacle, everything that's going on, for me, it's hard, I don't know about anybody else. Um, I just, I, I understand everything you're saying, I was there, I saw a lot of things, you taught me a lot of things, everybody taught me a lot of things down there, as far as chain of command, and, you know, everything that's been going on, and I know with, with police reform and everything that has been added on to you, it's, it's harder, 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 I understand that. Um, just, right now, I, I just don't know if this is the time to do this.
Okay, well, can I answer that?
Go ahead.
There's, I'm not asking for more money.
I know you're not asking for more money.
So how?
But, but, you are gonna get your recruits, you are gonna get back up to thirty-nine, then you're still gonna have those pay raises, you're s- you're gonna be coming back to the next budget for more money, at some point, because of this.
All right, well, I, well.
Am I right, or am I wrong?
No, not necessarily, because it's contractual pay raise, where, year over year, it's two percent agreed until June of twenty twenty-five, what happens after that, I don't know, but the only real pay raises are already negotiated, so yes, I will be coming back next year, people will say this year, F Y twenty-four, for that two percent raise, yes.
Uh, let me interject something, this is the part I'm trying to understand, okay, we're not gonna raise any money into the budget right now, because you have these positions that are empty, so we're gonna use that money to do the lieutenants.
Yep.
And then when we fill these, where's that money coming from, we have to come back and get that from taxpayers?
No, what's happening is, this is what's happening, so, we have four positions, we can get through June thirtieth without any issue, with what we have right now in our budget. When I come back in for the, when we start talking about, uh, F Y twenty-four budgets, I'm budgeting to have, I'm budgeted for thirty-nine people, so there's not, there's no, I'm trying to explain this to you, right now, I have the money available to do promotions and do the testing, the testing's gonna be, say, you know, eight, nine thousand dollars, I have all that money, because we don't have people working for us right now, after July first, if the budget's approved, it's in my existing budget, what was already given to the town, it's already in there, the thirty-nine people, so I'm not asking for more money.
But at some point, this lieutenant's position is gonna show up down the line.
Yes.
And I think, and I think the discussion that we're having, the same concern I have is, we have a fire station coming online, we have trash pickup, which is a big question mark, school capital's coming in, and some issues there, um, I'm looking at the D P W reorganization they're going for, and what happens is, chief, it's not that, I've been very supportive of the police department, but I'm just trying to put the, connect the dots, so to speak, in other words, what are we gonna look like three years from now? Where is this gonna be three years from now? We can do nice things right now because we got some leeway in the budget. But the thing is, that leeway ends up, you have to pay later. And the pay later theory is, maybe we all won't be here, somebody else is gonna inherit this. And that's why I'm, I'm having a real difficult time. I was on the council back when we didn't have any, we had, uh, one second in command, they abolished it, it was all sergeants and the chief. And it was wrong to be like that, and we saw it then. And we, there was an accredited police department, we tried to structure, find, find out what it wasn't, they were lieutenants and stuff, but when you take a flow chart, and you take a deputy chief. Does you, see what that, he's on the scale, but he's off. It's almost like, would you be better off getting rid of the deputy chief and go three lieutenants? The way you're breaking out the departments.
Right.
The, 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 the three legs, so to speak. And I'm not saying, you know, I, I see the fire department in the same structure. We have a, we never had two second in commands. We had the chief, and the captain, and the lieutenants at the fire department. Then there was some fire in Worcester, and they wanted to put the deputy chief in, so he could get in some back room. The taxpayer sucked it up, and we have a deputy chief. But the captain and the deputy chief, to me, are like two second in commands. To me, the, the, the mid-management of what I call mid-management, the sergeants are like the MVPs, they're the guys, boots on the management. Um, I'm not against a second in command, I think a second in command's needed. Uh, I'm having a hard time swallowing a lieutenant's position. Financially, uh, more than, I'm not gonna debate on structure, the military structure. Because I would look at the police department as a paramilitary in Southbridge, and this is what they do. But, money-wise, the only thing, there's so many I-don't-knows right now. With, with Cameron leaving, we're an acting town manager, we have a fire station in full swing, we have trash in full swing. Who knows what's gonna happen with the schools? I just look at the budgets and I'm like, wow, this is gonna be like, three years from now, it's gonna be like a wave. And that tax rate is gonna skyrocket. Now, and still it's an I-don't-know, do I wanna take a chance? That's the question in front of me.
Well, you know, can I?
I mean, sell me on it, make me convinced.
Oh, I, I will, well, I'll try. So, through you, Mr. Chair. The issue is when, when this originally came back with my predecessor, there was no such thing as police reform bill. And the responsibilities are not even nearly what they are now, right? That's the first thing. The second thing is, and I'll use my background. We have never, ever, ever been above, we've never, ever held constant staffing from nineteen ninety-five to now. So what I would say, my argument would be, about funding for the lieutenants in the future. I'm not coming in and asking for more money for the lieutenants ever, because we'll never be, and I don't wanna say never, but I am pretty confident in putting, you know, my reputation online professionally, that we're not gonna be fully staffed. So even next year, the year after, three years from now, from nineteen ninety-five to now, we have never not given back eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand dollars to the town from salary. Because, we've never been fully staffed. So it's, and I know some councils have joked, you know, joked with me about it, and I'm okay with it, but it's a shell game. It, I don't really, it's, that's a weird, strange way to describe it, but there's always money in our salary account because we never have enough people working, is what it boils down to. So even now, two years, three years, four years, going on the taxpayer, I haven't seen that from nineteen ninety-five to now. I can't possibly fathom that's gonna change. There are police departments who can't find people. Boston Police is the oldest police department in the United States of America, they have never, ever hired laterals till now. There are places, state police are letting people get through their process, they have no business being police officers, because no one's taking these jobs. The labor demand is so extreme right now. We are on a losing end, trying to find people, retain people, you can't do it. So I would, I would fall out of this chair if we're ever fully staffed for, in ten years, because in the last twenty-seven, we have never been. So I don't know what's gonna change, policing's gotten worse. There are less people taking the test now than ever, we used to get sixteen, seventeen thousand people to take the test, now we get a thousand, two thousand. So I can't, I can't imagine, me as the chief, and we're coming in here, through twenty twenty-eight at least, right? Um, and ever asking you for more money because we're never gonna be fully staffed. So yeah, you fund the positions, and that's great, and I respect that, we've come a long way from, you know, five, six years ago. But still, even with the council's support and the manager's support, we still haven't been able to fill positions. We're having a hard time filling them right now as we.
I just wanna bring one point on, and I'm gonna open it up. Councilors, this is what happens in, in, in government. Dispatch, we're gonna have an independent dispatch at the police department, it's gonna be better than what we had. Okay, this is what was sold to the town, and we opened it up at the police department, and took it out of the fire department. We have eleven people in dispatch.
Uh, nine, Scott.
Well, nine, so I'd have to be with the, with the supervisor again. We need a supervisor because we have two and a half, three, two and a half, three, and one at the top, so I'm, I'm saying ten, eleven?
There's only nine, no, Scott.
Right, but I, I understand that, but when you look at this, we used to have fire departments, sitting at the fire department, doing dispatch. Now we have this chunk of money we pay out here, which we never had to pay out before. Now we need to put this under the one, one of the lieutenants. When I turn around and I look at body cams, we did good things, I'm a body cam guy. Another thing we have to manage. So every time we do something good, it's gonna cost more. And that's the only thing I'm saying to the council is that, moving forward, everything has a cost factor to it. And now here we are at a cross section of, do we need this lieutenant, or don't we need the lieutenant, number one? Can we afford the lieutenant is number two. So I, I wanna open it up, but, when I saw this chief, I said, well, it reminds me of, of when we were trying to reorganize. Which back in the dark ages, it was looking bright on a lot of the stuff. We brought back the second in command, we brought back some stuff, added sergeants, but uh, this here is a lot of a lot to digest, let me just say that, and I'm gonna open it up, read this and then, Chenya.
Um, well, at the end of the day, you get what you pay for. And the quality of our police department, if we wanna continue to have the quality and the oversight, is extremely important. Um, I do agree with the police reform act, and I support it, and I think that um, making sure that our department is able to meet these demands. And our community is a growing community, it isn't gonna get smaller, um, it's only gonna grow further. Um, at this point, if he can do it within the budget, I think that we should support it. Um, it is, it is our challenge to make sure and keep yes, to keep the property taxes down on our community. But it's our challenge to increase the base of business, right? That's our challenge to do that as town councilors. So that our community gets the services that they need. But we also are not strapping our residents with higher taxes. Those are issues that we need to continue to work on. But we can't always say no, 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 and jeopardize quality. And a community that our police department is an integral part, that's why we have that's why they get commended all the time. That's why we have all of, you know, all of these services, because we've invested in our police department, in our fire department. Those are investments, and yes, they're expensive, they're not gonna get any cheaper, five years down the road. And we don't wanna risk having something happen because people aren't supervised properly. When there is so much going on in our community, that they need the supervision for the safety of our residents, and for the safety of our police officers.
Chenya?
I fully understand what the structure of command is about, from being on the fire department and the public safety. Uh, I also understand the, what's going on in the country under police reform. And if you see the departments that have gotten in trouble over this prior to police reform, is the lack of supervision of their, of the people that they control. There's nothing worse than putting a private in charge of a shift, or one or two kinds. Uh, 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 there's nothing worse for that individual, and you're setting the individual up for failure. And you're putting the town at risk because of the lack of leadership. Now, I'm not saying you got some privates out there that are probably very capable of running a shift. But to be put in that situation, not only puts a liability within the community, from the fire department, and ultimately the people that work, work the thing. I do support this, uh, because of the fact that ultimately, it's not going to cost the town any additional money at the moment. I fully understand, and I've been advocating, uh, within discussions of where we're gonna get the money. And I see a thing coming in the future where council, council's going to have to make a decision at some point of time to say, there's no money. But it's not up to me to say how, I, it, to, to where, where the money come from. It's gonna come from council to say, alright, in two years, it's, it's unaffordable. You're going to have to cut your fifteen, your department, I'm gonna use the number, fifteen percent. It's gonna be up to you where that fifteen percent comes to. But the council's going to have to make that, uh, decision. So, to say the money's not going to be there, where it's gonna come from, yeah, in a couple of years, we're gonna have some trouble. But it's gonna be up to council to say to the departments, listen, you gotta cut. Where that cut comes from is gonna be you, so whether cutting the lieutenant, cutting the patrolman. But I definitely see a need to have supervision, especially with the police reform the way it's going today. Because if you look throughout this country, the police departments that have gotten into trouble. Part of the major problem is the lack of leadership within those departments. So I just think this is an added plus, it's something that can be revisited each year. And if it doesn't work out, or the money's not gonna be there, it's up to council to say, listen, we're cutting the position. And then, I, 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 that's, that's my feeling on it.
Any other discussion by members of the committee, Frank Wong?
I, just a little bit. Thank you, um. Uh, I definitely want to support this for a lot of the same reasons that the previous two speakers have. I just like to be able to understand, uh, what I'm doing. Um, and you've given a lot of information, so some of my questions I don't feel I have to ask. But we, since I've been on council, we've talked a lot about body cameras. And I'm just curious, you, um, often associate body cameras with accreditation. And I see that they're on your proposed chart, being taken care of by two different lieutenants. But I don't, um, I trust your judgment, so I was wondering why it's like that, I'm sure you have a good reason for it.
Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Chair. So body cam, accreditation is gonna be every single day, monitoring reports. Incidents, accidents, processing, making sure that cell blocks are, you know, adequately prepared, staffing. Body cameras, I associate them, I kinda connect them together because I believe, and I could be completely wrong. Uh, right that one, first time, I could be completely wrong. The, uh, body cameras are eventually gonna be mandatory in the state, so I wanna get out in front of it, let us have it, like I said, we have a saying that. But they're tied together, but they're not. I know, I don't wanna talk in circles, but you don't need the same person to oversee body cameras and accreditation, because what's gonna happen is anything from the body camera component of what's required to supervise that program can just be given to the accreditation manager, he'll insert it, he or she will insert it into the appropriate location for what's, what's happening. So accreditation would be more of a, um, we have to comply with a certain amount of standards. We have to do everything that we say that we're doing in our policy and procedure manual, it's a thousand pages, right? It might be a little bit more than just off the top of my head. So if that lieutenant is responsible for accreditation, every single thing we do has to fall within that line of those march orders in that policy and procedure manual. Accreditation is a piece of it, is, I'm sorry, body cameras are a piece of that.
Yeah, yeah.
As far as all being, you could be in an accredited police department and not have body cameras.
Right.
I'm choosing to just go forward with both at the same time, because why prolong the inevitable? So I, just not to kinda give you that circular, but to come back around to it.
Yeah.
We could be accredited next year and have no body cameras, and we'd still be fine. But I think it's better for the community, and the men and women that work for it, to have a body camera program. Which is why we're doing them both at the same time, a lot of places wouldn't normally take that on, do both at the same time, because it's a lot of work. But we need it, we need it to maintain in, in police in twenty twenty-three, is what we do. Does that answer that?
Yeah, no, I just, I appreciate it, because I know that not all of the, uh, bubbles on the current organization are were there from B to A, like you've added some things, because now if you have two lieutenants, you can actually take care of some stuff. So I'm just kinda, I'm trying to piece it together, but I, I, I understand it better, um. People who seem to, uh, uh, be questioning support, I, I definitely understand everything everyone's saying, and I too question, uh, uh, looking at C looks nice, but then do you get rid of a deputy chief and have three lieutenants? But I, I will support the DNDB, uh, the proposed organizational chart for DNDB. Um. I, I do agree with you, and I totally understand that there's way more to do now than there was the first time you tried to reorganize, or not you, but the previous chief. So, um, I'll, I'll support this.
Uh, no, everybody got to speak, you get a good night.
Okay. Um, I would have to agree with Councilor Bazou and Mr. Julian, but the costs with this. If you would sit in some of my meetings, and some of the residents that have been coming to my meetings, their, with this complaint right now uh, is our taxes. We have too much, we are paying too much in taxes, they want us to make some cuts in the budget. As far as I'm concerned, the only way we can make cuts in the budget is to start cutting, either laying people off, or freezing wages. I don't know what the answer is, but I know a lot of residents are coming to my meetings and complaining about their taxes. And I know that we have a fire station coming up, and we have curbside garbage collection coming up, which is gonna add to the tax rate in this town. So I would have to agree with you on, on that score. The other, the other thing I wanted to mention is that I read, I read the, uh, police reform act, and that was signed by Charlie Baker. And I saw exactly what it, what the whole thing was about, and it was actually pushed by the Black and the Latino caucus because of what they felt, and this is in the report, they felt there was structural racism throughout the Commonwealth, not just the police department, but other departments, and they wanted some reform. So my question is, how does this address that issue?
The issue, through you, Mr. Chair. So, our, like, for example, uh, we now have to report, that's a very good question, by the way, I'm happy you read that, layered.
Well, I saw it in more paper, and I saw it, I've never read it, I don't wanna read it.
No, the issue with that, here's an example, so they want, the state, I say they, I mean the state. They wanted to put a mechanism in place where you could track, say, uh, the biggest one is use of force, right? So they wanna know, in Southbridge, and I'm proud to say this, we're not the issue. But you get to a bigger, uh, and I won't even mention names, a bigger department cities, where they have disproportionate amount of violence used and use of force against black men. Right? So what this requires us to do now, we didn't have to do this before. Every single time we take out a taser, even if we take out a taser, and we just do a, um, you don't fire the taser, you take it out. Anything that comes out of your holster now is, uh, considered a use of force. So what police reform requires is, they wanna know, how many times did that taser come out for white men? Black men, black women, how many times was, uh, you, you have a disproportionate amount of black men being, uh, struck with a baton, sprayed in the face with pepper spray? Shot, God forbid, uh, before there was nothing in place to track those type of things. How many black men versus Hispanic or white men in your community do you physically arrest every year? How many, um, how many, uh, you know, citations, minimal now. How many citations are issued, is it disproportionate African-American, or white, or Asian? All that stuff, yeah, they reported it, but no one ever really evaluated it. Now it's, there's a clearinghouse, for lack of a better word, where everything goes. And there's five civilians that sit on a board, I believe it's five, and they review everything. And that's why our requirements have gone up now dras, dramatically, from what we had to report before, because everything has to be done and submitted within, I think it's forty-eight hours of the incident. So, and that's, so to answer that question, now they can track, and they can say, hey, chief, by the way, ninety-four percent of your use of force were against black men, you need to come here and tell us why. You need to tell your elected officials why. And I have to explain that, and I hope I never have to get into that, but that's, that's what's changed a big piece of police reform.
But hiring a lieutenant is going to address that issue?
I, getting it.
Or promoting somebody?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, an additional administrator, lieutenant sergeant, or whatever, we have to have fill this role. Yes, they have to now document these incidents, they have to report them. Even with new hires, we have to do, um, and we never had to do this before, social media searches of every single platform that they're on. And you have to dig and go through every single page, and you have to sign off and attest that you did that. Making su, and, and, it, it's good, but it takes man-hours and resources, and another administrator will have the time to do that.
And then the other issue is this post, you keep talking about posts, that's a civilian review board.
Yes.
Have we thought of creating one here in Southbridge?
It was, you want me to, yeah, I can do that?
We'll go off, we'll go off subject for a minute.
Alright, so I would say.
Because it is on the structure.
It is on the structure.
No, absolutely. So I would say, as far as the civilian review board, if you look in Massachusetts, and me going off the top of my head, Boston, Cambridge, Pittsfield, Springfield, are the only ones with a civilian review board, and you know why? Because they need them. Our community, I, I mean, again, I don't wanna say don't support civilian review, a post is essentially that, what you're saying. It's a civilian review board at the state level, that oversees all the three hundred fifty-one cities and towns. But in our community, and I mean, maybe something could change, one incident can ruin it. We have a relationship with the police, with the citizens, where I don't think we need a civilian review board.
Well, if you have a good relationship with them, that it would seem to me that it wouldn't harm us to have one. And I also understand that we would be entitled to more grants if we add a civilian review, review board. And I'm not telling that, I'm not saying you have to do the grants. I think that's something that we have a full-time grant person who could work on something like that.
Through you, Ms. Chair, what I was saying, just to get back to civilian, uh, review boards, because I was just thinking of, so I'll give you the example, New York City Police, about the forty thousand cops, they have a civilian police review board. Out of all their complaints, and God, I can't even imagine how many come in right in the course of a day. Ninety percent, a civilian review board can only recommend. Ninety percent of the complaints at the NYPD are overturned by the commissioner. So the civilian review, review board can make any recommendation they want, fire Shane Watson immediately. The chief, at the end of the day, has the ultimate say. So that's why I don't know, even in, in, I, Cambridge and Boston, the bigger places, their chief ultimately says what's gonna happen. So you have the civilian review board, not a bad idea, post is a little bit different. Legally, they can recommend termination, or sorry, wrong word, they cannot de, they cannot recertify it. So legally, if you're not certified to work as a police officer, you can't work anymore. So that's a great thing, if we have a bad apple in our department, they could lean on the union, they could lean on civil service. But in our state, and I don't know, I don't know how other states are, when post says we won't recertify you, I can't keep you on the books as a cop. But again, so that's why civilian, that sounds good, I know in theory, but even in New York City, and again, much larger than we could ever dream of dealing with. But again, so that's why civilian, that sounds good, I know in theory, but even in New York City, and again, much larger than we could ever dream of dealing with, most of their complaints, the majority are all are overturned by the command staff, because they have the ultimate say.
And just just a couple of things, and then I'm done. Uh you also say that you have two police officers at the school, but according to the reform, you don't have to have them there anymore.
Through through you, honestly, um you you never have to have them there. I choose to have them in there because the school, Worcester Police Department, um the city of Worcester, threw their SROs out of this all the schools, and it was absolute mayhem violence, they're back in now. Our receiver, you know, contract, whatever people think about receivership, but me as the chief, we need police officers in that school.
So you think we have them?
We need more than two.
Try try that school.
Well, I would say that with two people in hand dealing with the junior high school and the high school, and we still have our officers kind of walk through all the element, younger kids, less problems. Uh we need, we have support of the schools. When this all started, Dr. Vala was contacted and they asked, I don't know who, um someone at the state level, how's your relationship with the school resource officers, do you need them, do you want them out? And he said, no, I want them in there, we have a great relationship. So that's, you know, Worcester took them out and they had some serious issues, I think if we pull ours out immediately, we would have issues.
Well, I'm just wondering why they put that in here, then it's no longer required.
It is, in my opinion, it never was required, we didn't have to have people at the schools, we chose to have them there.
So they only lap, one last thing. And correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's a reorg, isn't that the town manager's obligation to do the reorg? That's what you said last night, uh Mr. Shenyer. So is this something that you proposing or the town manager's proposing? I don't know how that works.
Well, I'm here as the as the chief of the department recommending that this be.
All reorganizations, and and correct me if I'm wrong, two charter usually comes through, am I right in saying that?
Let me, uh what I was told after I brought that up last night was, let me bring it up.
Well, Sonny, you talked about it can be discussed.
Right.
But actually.
But I think, I'm gonna let uh Julian talk and then we'll come back to that.
I'm also.
Okay.
So.
But we will answer that question.
Who conducts, or does anybody conduct in this town exit interviews?
I, through you, Mr. Chair, I have asked the manager, Mr. McCall, and every manager, please, do the exit interview. And where that lays right now, I don't know, but you're more than, I wouldn't recommend an uh elected official call them, but ask our manager to find, to conduct exit interviews, and whatever they choose to divulge, they can divulge, but I can't get into personnel discussions.
So as of right now, you don't know of anyone that does exit interviews?
I I do them as the chief, but what they're gonna tell me, sitting in my office, is probably much different than what they're gonna tell the manager. So I would recommend, go see the manager and tell him why you're leaving if you want to. We had a police officer who left here several years ago, and it was a point of contention where they wanted to talk to this man, and they did. And I don't think that they heard what they wanted to hear, he left for his own reasons and had nothing to do with the police chief or the police department or the town. It was, there's a lot of layers to when people leave. And unfortunately, a lot of times you hear one side of the story, and I can't tell you the other side, the real side.
I'm not saying this for the police department, I'm saying for every department.
In general, I would recommend exit interviews. I'm fine, I I I'm confident with the way we run our shop and why people leave, if they choose to divulge that, that's fine. But when they leave, most people, believe it or not, when I talk, they leave on pretty good terms. Just because they're leaving doesn't mean the world's ending and, you know, we're all gonna, it's a bad place, just they have other reasons why they wanna leave.
Um I again, we probably should inquire from um the HR director, Ms. Urbena. Um but now that we have an HR director, that's usually in there per view to do the exit interviews for all the departments out there now.
I I um the DPW, I'm not big, I I think HR needs some homework for themselves. Um after the DPW debacle, it was like, the discussion was, who does reorganization? There's no question about it, it comes from you. Uh I'm 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 good with what's going on here. Uh but with with the town manager gone and the acting manager uh has COVID and he's gonna be working from home, um unless somebody can show me something why I shouldn't be doing this, I'm gonna continue to do it.
I like that.
Go ahead.
Last night I brought it up to the general government about, because they were discussing.
What's it say, short version?
Town manager may propose a plan subject to applicable laws in terms of this charter to establish, reorganize, consolidate, or abolish any town agency under his or her jurisdiction. Such reorganization plan may not be amended by the town council, but shall either be approved or disapproved by the, in the form of the submit.
Okay, under legal terms of may.
Right.
We can do it. Okay, going forward, I'd just like to comment, you know, I came in here undecided, and I'm having a tug of war here, but Georgia, just to you, um you brought up training and oversight. And the one thing that I know that the management does is to keep the rank and file by the letter of the law, whether it be lieutenant, a sergeant, a chief, or a deputy chief. Um after your comments earlier, I I really, I, the budget is is good, this thing's gonna blow up. So one question, if I come to you as a council and we say, we're gonna cut five percent of your budget, what goes, management or foot soldiers?
What I would do hypothetically, Mr. Chair, if I said, if you said five percent, we'd have to s- cut overtime, we have to cut. People will be the last to go, whether it's foot soldiers or management, that's the last to go, it really is. Or I could tell you this, and again, I wish I had a crystal ball, on budget for thirty nine, the town council gives us the order, hey, listen, you gotta cut five percent. You know what, we always have vacant positions, maybe we can't fill them. So we're not cutting patrolmen, we're not cutting command staff, we're just not filling existing positions. Because you, something could change in six months, another war or what.
The reason why I bring it up, Chief, it's usually first in, last out.
Yeah, yeah.
And this lieutenant is being put in now, uh and we, although we cannot tell you what to cut, I would I would hope that if if a cut came, that this nice to have would go before the have to have, which is your your rank and file foot soldiers.
And again, through you, because in previous town manager, I'm not sure if you were on the council a couple, well, whatever, years ago.
When George Washington crossed the Delaware.
We always got that, no, we always got that directive, hey, chief, not just me, everybody, department head, cut five percent, what's it look like? And every single time, people are the last thing I wanna lose, because you never get them back.
Yep.
So it's always, we we kind of chew around the edges and we get to that five percent number, but maybe if a person has to go, maybe it's a civilian dispatcher, one. Or maybe it's, again, the overtime account is a little bit less, and the shift may may not go uncovered. Um sick leave, and we don't fill shifts when people bang out sick, is it an issue? Yeah, it's an issue, but I'd rather cut everything else other than people.
Thank you.
Because you're never gonna get them back, and you know that.
Did you have, you had, did you handle?
No, I lost that.
Uh uh you know, council does these things they think is really good, and I'll use the example of the cameras. Uh when you brought it forward, it's a great thing for the for the community, it's a great thing for the police. I was against police reform, because I felt that it was just gonna go from, it was put together hastily because of issues that were going on within the minority uh community.
Can we circle around to this?
Yes, so I wanna use the body cam camera for instance. That costs money every shift. If I understand the way the body camera works, is at the end of each shift, the individual comes and has to put it into a holder, that holder records and sends data somewhere, and that data has to be compiled within, and that's every shift. I'm told that he takes the gun out of the holster, the auto camera automatically starts. Same thing with, so that's a, it's a great feature to have, but it's ultimately going to cost more money at the end of the day. So we need people to look at that, I mean, so I I am going to support, I don't need to talk no more.
Okay.
Just before, can I close to him or not? Let me, can I just close?
Yeah, he had one caller. Mike?
Oh, um thanks, I just wanted to say, and I'm gonna say this again on Monday night, I'm probably, I'm sure, I wanted to talk about it more. But out of all the things that you could use taxpayer money to help Southbridge progress, I believe the police department is is a huge part of this. Um I I think they're one of the main things in this town, keeping this unique uh urban community in a suburban area safe and not out of control, like pu- put maybe the example of taking the uh officers out of Worcester's schools. Um I I think that the, it's the best investment of the the police department, and that's ultimately why I'm gonna support it. When it comes to cutting the budget, I think uh the chief brings up a good point. Um you you s- go for budgeted thirty nine and you maybe budget thirty eight or thirty seven, and you're almost, you're almost there.
Far better.
You know, for five percent, I mean, so I I I don't think that this reorganization is, you know, we don't have the crystal ball, but in my gut, it tells me that in three years, this will be fine, if we do this now, uh but thank you.
Councilor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. Chief?
Yes, sir.
You're giving me a wrong or I play, I don't understand none of these. You say you have forty officers, you approve for forty officers.
Very.
When you promote to lieutenant, is that included the forty or at the end you have to refill what it was promoted already? So you you're gonna, you need managers, you need more guys, you need more supervisor. But if we promote all the officers, who's gonna be on the ground? And we're gonna come back later and say, hey, listen, now I have three for, three lieutenant detectives and kid in car and school and all that, now I need another five officers, is that possible?
Through you, Mr. Chair, as we sit here tonight, we are budgeted for thirty nine in FY twenty three on coming forward for all of you probably next month to stay at budgeted thirty nine. The council authorized me to move forward with forty, because I can never ever maintain that. Right now, I don't know if you were here in the beginning, but we have thirty five people working that. So to answer your question quickly, because I know you guys don't wanna hear me all night, we will not be asking to ever get beyond, as far as right now, I don't know what's gonna happen five years from now, maybe when I'm not here, but as we sit here tonight, if I was budgeted for forty, we would be in a good place. On budget for thirty nine, but regardless of a lieutenant's promotion or not being promoted, or I'm not coming in here and asking you for forty, forty one, forty two, that's growing the department, I'm not asking to grow the department, I'm trying to reorg the department, there's a difference. And I feel comfortable, and again, I'm using a lot of political equity here, because I've said it fifteen times, but I feel comfortable telling you that I'm not gonna need more money, probably for the time that I'm the chief here, because I don't think that we can ever staff, get to full staffing. We're always behind, by the time the hiring process goes through, by the time we get someone going to the academy, we're losing somebody. So that's the only reason why I would even propose this. I certainly wouldn't come to the council and ask them for a, you know, ten percent increase in overall budget or whatever it is, to to make this promotion happen, I wouldn't do that.
But is it possible in the future, you're gonna fill those position, like, because if you promote most those officers, but lieutenant, whatever that position lieutenant with, and you're gonna promote another person to take that position. So actually moving everybody out, who who left for officer on the ground, just the regular officer? Are you gonna ask for more officer on the ground in the future?
No.
Julian, then I'll take you.
So what you're saying is promoting a sergeant to lieutenant, then you're gonna promote a patrolman to sergeant, that leaves you with less patrolmen.
What's happening is, yes, but not a hundred percent. What happens, say this gets, if if this was approved, I'll let you the the proposal. A lieutenant moves up, a sergeant moves to lieutenant, patrolman moves to sergeant, another lieutenant moves up, so another patrolman moves to sergeant. We have four hopefully going into a police academy in another month. It's still thirty nine people, it's, I'm not increasing how many people is there is. If there's gonna be a lieutenant on second shift, who can answer calls? There's gonna be a lieutenant staying after midnight who can answer calls, so you're not losing any of the coverage that you normally would get. You look, you're confused, please ask me, because.
I'm not confused, you half answered the next question I had. Are these lieutenants all on first shift?
No.
Because I know right now you have a lieutenant on second shift, you and the deputy chief on first shift, and there's no lieutenant on third shift.
No, if I, through you, Mr. Chair, this is not gonna be, uh, and I say guys, man or woman, um we're all on days sitting around with all the gold, all the brass, no. This is gonna be a working, working people, they're gonna be on seconds, they're gonna be covering that mid, are they gonna work till seven in the morning? No, but I can see them working seven at night, three in the morning. It's gonna be a flex shift, whatever we need you to do, whenever you can get this work done, but it's not gonna be all of us sitting around a big table um on days, it's not gonna happen.
I wasn't saying that.
Yeah, no, but you know what I mean, I understand why it would look like that, you know, I get it. Um it, so we're still gonna have, and I'll go back to this with the um, as far as staffing. When we had the tornado here back in the day, and the state police came in and covered our community for, you know, a week at a time, because we were tied up with that nonsense, they had ten guys come here every single day, they would not patrol our streets without ten people working here. I know that might be a shocker to some people, we patrol the streets with three or four. So I mean, I could easily come in here and try to, and ask you for fifty cops, but I'm not doing it. I'm just trying to reorg the police department to meet the needs of what we have going on here. You have agencies, you could call them and ask them, C five and Sturbridge, they don't come to this community with like two or three people.
Oh, I know.
They need six, seven, eight, nine, ten is what they would recommend, working a day or an eve shift here. We would never do that to the town, it would kill the town. Um, well, you know, but as far as the, you know, and then you look at the span of control, and if Dave Adams is here, he could tell you, um or or at least back up what I'm saying, three to five people is what you're supposed to be supervising. Under our current o- organizational chart, we have like ten or twelve that people, it's just not, you can't effectively supervise people without having additional command staff. So I'm not trying to cut patrolmen boots on the ground, I get it, I respect it, we're just trying to reorg the department and not ask for any money. It's a big lift, and I'm gonna have to, you know, sharpen my pencil, but I feel pretty comfortable that I can do it, or I wouldn't come here and and, you know, use all this equity here that I have with the council, because they've been, they have all been very good to the police department, all of you, and I respect it. So I just try to work within our guidelines, um work with what we got, and just provide the best service that we can.
Well, do you? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So sitting here, listening to everybody and everything.
Yeah.
I feel a little better about it. I'm still, I'm still a little on the fence, but uh I do feel better about it, thank you.
Okay, uh so I think for the clarification of the, maybe the original question that uh Councilor Dow was asking, let's pretend this all gets approved, right now you move and fill the lieutenant positions and fill the vacant sergeant positions. I know you have four people in academy, but for the time being, you would technically be down a patrolman from last night to today. It comes out patrolman while you wait for academy.
For the time being, just?
Yeah, if it all happened instantly right now, you technically have one less patrolman.
Yes.
The guys that can work, the lieutenants aren't gonna sit around, you know, but you're.
But I would say this, uh Mr., well, you guys.
Go ahead, do you to her?
So what I would say through you, Mr. Chair, we're not losing any coverage in the community, as far as when it comes to the safety and uh um and even the equalization of workload, we're not gonna have like two patrolmen carrying all the weight, well, again, all the brass, and I get it. When I was a kid, a rookie, I used to think, what do those guys do all day? The chief and the lieutenants, you know how that is, you know, how come they have such eat, it's not what, it's not, it's not that, that's not what I'm looking.
No, I just meant that the the number of like current patrolmen would would go down a tick, because you, people get filled up there while we wait for the academy.
It would, but I'll say this, it's not going down, not only exclusively with the second lieutenant, we're dropping down two patrolmen, because two people are leaving.
Right.
So we're essentially, and by the time I can backfill them and get them back out on the street, so yes, if it all happened right now instantly, and I know it won't.
No.
We would be down, but we're gonna be down irregardless of the promotion, because we have people that leave and they give us two weeks notice, and that's a hell of a lot to make up in two weeks.
Right, thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Councilor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. Chief, is any rule saying every ten officer will need lieutenant or 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 what's the rule? I I mean statewide or local, it's any rule, any law saying if you have forty or ten or five, they need a lieutenant or they need a sergeant, whatever. Any, any by law somewhere?
Oh, I'll say this, through you, Mr. Chair, like, Mr. Chair, um Worcester PD, it's not a law for every five patrolmen, they need a sergeant. For every three sergeants, they need a lieutenant, they do not work shifts ever without that command structure in place twenty four seven. Southbridge, if I said that, we would have sixty people working for us, if that was the law. So I wouldn't say it's a law, but the the uh the standard practice in policing, every five patrolmen, three to five patrolmen is a sergeant. Every three sergeants is a lieutenant, every like full lieutenant is a captain, and so on and on and on and on, so, but I'm not here asking for that. I'm just asking, I'm trying to shrink our span of control by cutting it in half from what we are right now.
Is this is what you say now, is this something, that's how you see it, or that's the state law?
No, that's not how I see it, it's the reality, Worcester PD, Boston PD, bigger cities, that's how they operate, yes.
Yeah, we're talking about hundred plus officers there, you know, you know, but I'm sorry, what's the state law?
There there isn't one, that that's the recommendation in in policing in our industry.
Counselor, I'm telling you, we're beating this to death, I don't see any information.
I'm done, I, you look like you're tired of this conversation.
No, I just, we keep repeating the same thing, I'm not a big fan of repeating the same thing. You know, I mean, thirty nine, we have budgeted for forty, we're gonna, it's the same discussion, the same answer, four times. That's when I usually say, bring it back around, if there's something new, go ahead.
We're budgeted for thirty nine, not forty.
The budget, we allowed forty, go ahead, you're you're.
You said we we have thirty five now, is that including the empty lieutenant's position?
Thirty five now, through you, Mr. Chair, is not counted, because that's, the person's gone, so we have no lieutenant right now. The thirty five people that we have working right now for the police department is not the lieutenant.
Okay.
One of the positions I'm saying.
Okay. Just asking, the clarification, that's all.
Does anybody have anything new?
I don't.
If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Yeah, it's all present. Thank you very much. Okay, Chief, welcome, hope everything was safe on your mission.
All of them, yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number three, if you want to discuss the donation of five hundred dollars to the fire department. Moving on to agenda item number three, review and discuss the donation of five hundred dollars to the fire department from the. From the Italian club, an entertaining motion. To the council to accept this donation to be used at the discretion of the fire chief.
Second.
Is the motion second, discussion, Chief?
Uh, I I I take, thank you very much from, uh, the Italian club for putting this, uh, donation together. Obviously, Chief Woodson put his, uh, his his request in to do the same thing today. Um, and obviously, we're we're grateful when somebody does does donate to us, and we do use them in a time of need, uh, for training, uh, whatever we need to to make this, uh, to make the department run a little bit more smoother.
Any discussions, questions? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item number four, review and discuss the fire department transfer. Request for fifteen hundred dollars from account zero zero one, two two zero dash five, one one, zero zero zero. Salaries and wages personnel to zero zero one, two, two zero, five two, three zero zero. Water and sewer to cover the costs accrued during the. An undetected leak, an entertaining motion to the council to approve.
So.
Second.
Have motion as second, Chief?
So thank you, everybody, uh, this is definitely a, uh, it was an eye opener for me when when it came in last week, and my admin opened it up and said, holy, what's going on? Uh, I've reached out to the water department, they were able to, uh, look at our use, um, so towards the end of, uh, November last year, Thanksgiving time. Uh, we had a rear toilet, uh, go faulty. Uh, it was leaking inside the bowl, nobody knew it, it had been going on for quite some time, we repaired it, it was, we repaired it in-house, uh, we, and, uh, it continued to leak, so it went about three weeks. Um, and it continued to leak inside the toilet, so it went into the sewer system, uh, so unfortunately, we do have to pay for it, I did inquire if we could abate it, but. Because it went into the sewer system, we can't abate that that type of, uh, payment, so, uh, the request for money is is coming from salaries. Um, and that is for budgeted positions, uh, that was vacated, uh, by our full timer, uh, in August, and then also, as it states here in the, uh, request. It was from budget, budgeted positions that we did not start, they started like two weeks late for the four new guys, so the money is there.
Questions?
Uh, question, when you worked with the water and sewer when they took over, how come, how come they, they they can't wipe this out?
They can't, because the water enterprise finally went separate, the whole operation is separate from the town of, say, the fire department.
I know, it's just like taken from.
I said the same thing when they did it, but that came in after the purchase. Not when we purchased.
So they can't abate it?
Nope. Want to take it? Mike?
Um, they don't detect these things until, what, after it happens?
Through the chair, I hope you answer that, because I went down to to the, uh, water department, kind of on fire. Um, their current system does not detect on a daily basis any leaks that happen, so the only time I knew was when the bill came in, there was no detection, it's not like a phone alert saying, hey, you got. X amount of water going through your system, it it's undetected, so there is no, the system currently right now only does it when the bill is being populated.
And this wouldn't be covered under insurance as well?
No. This, if I may, just let me just weigh in on this. Residents called me and they say I have a five thousand dollar water bill. And the thing is, if you have a break after the meter, you won't, if it's a break before the meter, the meter is what determines you have your, that you have a problem. And, uh, there's there's nothing you can do about it, because there's no way you can detect once the water goes into the sewer line. You know, it's in the system. The meter is the cut point where you can actually say. This is what you used, or this is what, so when you have one, a hundred dollar bill, one quarter, and then you have a five thousand dollar bill, this is a real number. Because my son had it on his house, and you have to turn around, you can go for an abatement, but. They can't abate it, and I mean, we had one where the meter was here, my meter was in this building. But back in the day, they built it when they put the water line down to my garage. It broke here. Eleven thousand dollars later, there was no abatement, and it was running here in the dirt, and there was no way I could detect it until I got my monthly bill. Which meant it was a break in the water line, and it was just running into the gravel, wasted the water, never made it to the building. I took the meter out of the building and we, we have to redo the water line and update where we actually have control over our water line. But it's a, it's a sad situation, like George says, we own the water company and we can't abate our own fire department. Mike?
No, I must.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item number five, review and discuss an increase to ambulance billing rates. And entertain a motion to the town council to accept the two thousand twenty-three rate change and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. We have a motion, second? Discussion, Chief?
So, and just my memo, it's pretty upfront, and obviously I'll answer any questions for it, but, uh, as you all aware, the ambulance department treats and transports our citizens to medical facilities throughout our region for emergency care. E M Ts department, it's provide a high quality of care for our citizens in a time of emergency. Uh, we have seen and heard of many success stories through our, through our interventions over the years, the staff has diagnosed, treated, and delivered. Those patients to the most appropriate care facilities for continued care. Uh, the organization, our organization currently produces an annual revenue of, uh, over one million dollars a year, as we would like to continue this revenue stream. Um, it has come now, that that time again, because we do it often, um, about every year to sixteen months, the last time we increased our rates was May fifth of two thousand twenty. Uh, as as you know, the, uh, attached, um, form that we use to do the rate increases attached to the memo. Um, and I'm looking at the, do you guys have the one that's circled? It says average bundles, ComStar fifty. Uh, that number is, um, obviously, ComStar is our billing agency, uh, they take an average of fifty departments, put it together and 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 multiply and divide things, and this is what the average comes out for for the, uh. This has been the process that ComStar's been doing for, uh, I've been involved with them for about eighteen years now, so every year, this this new rate form comes out with the average bundle package.
Discussion. Mike, Counselor McCarry?
It seems to me that raising these rates like this hurts people that can, are already being hit by high bills and everywhere else, so. Taxes are up, cost of food is up, so it just seems to me that raising rates like this, I wouldn't be a fan of this, I think we should give them a break for a change. That's all, thank you.
Counselor Rivas?
Um, so you said the last time the rate went up was twenty twenty?
May fifth of two thousand twenty.
And what was the increase?
Nine percent on the first.
From previously, I think the, uh, I I'm going off some some memory, uh, in my brain, um, the in, I believe the increase was about eight or nine percent. Um, and that was done in two thousand eighteen, so trying to do it every, you know, every year and a half or so. Now, just a reminder that these these rates, um. As we set these rates, HMOs would definitely be the top, uh, payments of these. Um, generally, the HMOs, HMO Blues, and Blue Crosses, they usually pay that rate right up upfront. Um, the ninety percent of our patients that we deal with are our Medicare, Medicaid, and they are, they don't pay this, they pay a contractual state fee. Um, it's very low from this, um, and that's that's majority of our our people that we transport, the hospital, L O D people and things like that. So, it's a contractual rate, which is right around three, three or four hundred dollars.
Mr. Chair?
Chief, how much, how much do you bill?
So. It's not a very good number, George, and I know we've had this discussion, it's a little under five million dollars a year that we bill on ambulance receipts. Because, because what we we do collect is a little over a million dollars. Um, but because we only collect that amount of money. Medicare, Medicaid, that ninety percent that I talked about, is where we take the loss, the huge loss, because we have such a high population of Medicare, Medicaid use and self pay and those type of things. So, we're we're still collecting about a little over a million dollars.
Wait, we're kind of wiping out three million.
Pretty, a little bit more than three million every year.
It's non, non-collectible.
Non-collectible, because it's contractual with the, uh, federal government in Medicare.
Tax, so the taxpayers pay. If it's wiping out, you don't either, you still have to pay for it, so somebody has to pay for it.
Right, but if I understand it right, you get X amount of dollars from Medicare, Medicaid, the state rate, and I want to use, let's say, for basic B L S is four thirty-five ninety two. The current rate that you build insurance companies, Joe, Joe off the street, is fourteen seventy-seven. You can't go after Medicare for the additional money, but you you can go after the insurance company or the individual that used the ambulance. You collect a balance that's not paid by the insurance company.
That is correct.
You don't have that ability to do that as a Medicare provider.
Correct.
So. Ultimately. The million dollars that, we, I mean, we're losing three million dollars, but it's, it's, it's not all. A lot of it's contributed to the loss of money from Medicare, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I would, I would just like to add that a lot of the insurances don't cover the whole thing either. I have insurance, before I retired, I had insurance that didn't cover the entire amount, so I would have to pay the difference.
Correct, and he, and I believe you do go. ComStar goes, tries, collects that additional.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, it's like, we are already, I think that this is pretty high already, he says he's making a million dollars, this is pretty high, I don't think we have to keep raising the rates of it.
Chief, so, so the way it works, and George is is a hundred percent correct in the way he described the Medicare, Medicaid, uh, so if, in in a simple world, if if we charge a thousand dollars and you have Medicaid. You're only gonna get four, we're only gonna collect four hundred dollars, the other six hundred dollars gets washed away, there's no collections, I can't send them to collections, I can't send you a bill at your house, uh, I can't do any of that.
So our residents are getting that money knocked off their bill.
Correct.
So really, we're raising it on that four hundred dollars that you get from Medicare?
Correct.
So Medicare is only paying the four hundred dollars, the rest of it's gonna be coming to the resident.
He's correct in that aspect too, give you that thousand dollar example again. Employee or someone has a a HMO Blue for, and we charge them a thousand dollars. Generally, with my experience in history in regards to the billing, generally, HMO Blue plays that, pays that one thousand dollars. Except for people that buy the HMO Blue plan that doesn't cover ambulance service. So the ambulance service usually will, it, generally, HMO Blue will pay, and I'm just using round figures, don't, do not quote me. Of that thousand dollars, HMO Blue will pay seven hundred and fifty dollars. That the the person you, that used the ambulance, the citizen, would have to come up with two hundred and fifty dollars.
And if they don't, we go after them?
If they don't, we check several things, there's a process for that, there's an ambulance billing collection process. If that employee, or that that person owns property in town, we make sure that the taxes are up to pay, so I work with the assessors office, get that that type of thing. Um, and then we can go and and they can, they can, uh, we can go and ask them for the money, we can send them to collections. Um, the collections agency is what the the town wanted many, many years ago to get revenues up, so they can go to collections, or. The person that has the two hundred and fifty dollars that they owe, they can ask, uh, request a hardship request form, they send us all the information. We can do a five dollar a month payment, I have a a an older woman, a very, actually quite old woman, that pays five dollars every month to ComStar to pay off her bill, she does it religiously. Um, so you get a request for a a a hardship request to approve by the fire chief. And I I write a request, I I approve them all, for whatever they can afford to pay.
Go ahead.
How is that hardship request message to, um, residents, how how do they know about it?
Through the chair, so when a person owes, when when it comes back that ComStar did not receive the full seven hundred and fifty dollars, there's a two hundred and fifty dollar balance, ComStar will reach out to them. Uh, three times, and if they don't hear back from them, they'll call them and say, hey, listen, you have, and then ComStar will give them the ability to do the hardship form. Good majority of people do the hardship request form, and we just make sure that it's all set, and we send it off, and they do do it.
And that's all included in the fee that ComStar charges?
Yes.
I won't say just. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, all that is included in the fee that ComStar charges the town?
That that is correct, and to answer that is that, the con- current contract with ComStar is three percent on collected revenue. So three percent last year was like thirty thousand dollars.
Collected revenue.
Collected revenue.
So it's not based on the four million dollars they find it, so it's, what they collect is the three percent, oh.
Thank you.
Counselor Dow.
Uh, through you, thank you. So, do you have accountant in house to send the, uh, debt, uh, payment or residence, or no, you have a special office will take the bill of the fire department and it will deal with the residence?
So that's a, that's a big question, so we, right now, if you take the ambulance, we send all of our, uh, reports to ComStar Billing Agency. They put the whole, they code it correctly with the medical diagnoses, and they push out the bill to the insurance, mostly the insurance companies. Or car insurance, uh, car, vehicle insurance companies, when it when it's a car accident or industrial accident. That process takes about three months for all the monies to start coming in, it's usually about a three month turnaround, ComStar does all of that for us. When it comes down time to that, I get notified that X person didn't pay, they have a balance, then it kicks into me to decide what has to happen with how much they owe. What the assessors office says they owe for taxes, did they send, did they fill out a hardship form? And the piece that I think you're asking about is about the collections agency. So ComStar will send me the information, they've done their best to try to get the money out of them, in a town ten, fifteen years ago. Uh, wanted a collection agency because it was an outstanding group, so in the ComStar billing, uh, contract, we have, uh, a subcontract with the collections agency. So those people go right off to the collections agency.
Okay.
One more question, Chair, for you, how far from other, uh, uh, provider, ambulance or transfer, uh, call, like. I remember one time I heard you guys, uh, let's say you wanna transfer somebody to Boston, it would be five, six hundred dollars, uh, different company came charged five thousand. Is that true, like, you're you're way off other providers around the area?
To answer the question through the chair, so that was probably quite a few years ago, our rates are way higher now, uh, than before, so it probably would be a little bit less. Uh, but it's still, I can tell you right now that the private services do charge four to five thousand dollars to take you to Boston. Uh, it is quite expensive, the whole, the whole system is expensive.
Thank you.
Counselor Rivas?
Um, my other question is, how, do you have kind of numbers on how many people apply for the hardship and how many people are in collections? Um, I mean, I, I understand that, you know, this is revenue, but if we're just creating more hardship, I I tend to. I am concerned in the same way as Counselor McCarry is concerned, where are we cre- just creating more opportunities for people to have hardship and be in collections? And not really getting the revenue that we're thinking we're gonna get, so I'd love to know if.
Through the chair, that's that's kind of easy to answer, is that actually, I only have one open hardship with case, and the last one before that was probably about seven or eight months ago, so it's not very frequent. It's not very frequent, the insurance company, you know, ComStar, uh, work very well together, they've been doing it for years, and they usually, they write off as. Uh, seventy-eight dollars, I just write those off, those are, it's like, I don't know if it's bad, it would be called bad debt, if you live in town and you owe seventy-eight dollars, off the list you go, you don't get reported to credit, you don't do any of that stuff, so. Anything under five hundred dollars, I have that ability to do that, anything above, the town manager has to be involved, and we haven't had, eh, too many of the, actually, when Michael McColl was here, he did not have to do any of those. Does that answer your question?
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, for you, Chief, any, any break for the elderly, because, you know, they retire, they have certain insurance that pays so much, the lip of social security or whatever. Is any break for those people, the elders or no, just the standard like everybody else, or something we can do for them in the future?
So, to the chair, um, the elderly, anybody that's over, I I don't wanna specify.
Easy.
That's exactly what I was gonna, didn't want, I wanna, anybody that's over a certain age, they have to have Medicare, Medicaid or M S O, derivative. Those are contractual, if they use the ambulance, they'll get charged a three, they'll get charged a thousand dollars, the contractual rate will be four hundred dollars, the town will get the four hundred dollars. Not, the above, the balance is wiped away, so they don't really get, they don't get hit at all, whoever. I don't wanna use the word elderly, sorry.
Any other questions, if there were other questions, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Admonmit, the way you're most of the adjournment.
Just one discussion, d- during the budget process, I I think their budgets come to us.
Uh huh.
Is there a possibility that we can have an agenda item about, you know, the revenue they bring in? That it could be put into capital, so when it comes time to buy an ambulance or anything like that, that money is like accumulated?
Well, I think that, uh, that discussion is gonna take place anyways. We sold the Jeep, not the Jeep, we sold one of the fire trucks for thirty-nine thousand and some change, and I'm a firm believer that you go into capital. Uh, you you sold a piece of equipment, put it into that capital fund that that created, and, uh, as as capital is needed. Then it would come out of the capital into that, not into the, out of the free cash, we'll be discussing it during budget.
I would like, uh, the excise tax, I would like that to go towards those, can we do that?
We can talk about that, excise taxes on D P W, you're talking about the ambulance and fire equipment.
Fires.
Oh, the devil, the boys, they're in the ballpark, good during.